Okay, I'd like to bring to order the town of Cordera Madera regular town council meeting for Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, starting at six thirty P. M. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here, Bailey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, can we salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, so now we'll move to open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor or presiding officer. The public will be given an opportunity to speak on each agenda item when the item is called. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Seeing none in in person, is there anyone online?
Um, we have three or ten attendees, no hands raised, and we did not receive emailed public comment for open time.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and move on to number three, which is presentations. Item three A is an acknowledgement of the two thousand and twenty-three Citizen of the Year, Mark Gold Rosen, and two thousand and twenty-three Business Citizen of the Year, Bob Valentino of Stefano's Pizza. Um, is there any report or would you like me to just read the um? The award.
Um, we do not have a report, but as we did announce at the uh, July twenty-first Town Council, or June twenty-first Town Council meeting, that uh, the awards were would be presented to Mark Gold Rosen and Bob Valentino, and that we would be honoring them at this meeting, so we're proud to have both of them and I'm here today as well as Julie Kritzberger from the Cordera Madera Chamber of Commerce.
Excellent. All right, so we have this uh, nice write-up. I'd like to read it for the record. This is the town of Cordera Madera commendation to Mark Gold Rosen, the two thousand and twenty-three Citizen of the Year. Whereas Mark Gold Rosen has been nominated for recognition as the town of Cordera Madera's two thousand and twenty-three Citizen of the Year, and whereas Mark has lived in Cordera Madera with his wife Barbara Solomon for approximately thirty years, where they raised their two children, Julie and Jason, and whereas he has worked as a criminal defense attorney for nearly forty years, and throughout that time, despite the heavy workload, he has been an active volunteer in his community, both in the local school system where his children attended Neil Cummins Hall and Redwood High School, and in youth sports where he coached his sons' baseball, basketball, and soccer teams, and supported his daughter at her mini volleyball games, and whereas Mark has been running the Cordera Madera Summer Sunday Concert Series for ten years, first assisting Cynthia Trutner, uh, and then gradually assuming the role of planning, scheduling, and executing the entire series, which consists of twelve weeks of live music on Sunday evenings at Pico Pavilion in Miki Park, and whereas the much anticipated annual concert series has grown and evolved under his leadership, where people now come from all over the Bay Area to attend the concerts, and the crowds have expanded from a small gathering to sometimes more than five hundred people. And whereas he has also served on the Cordera Madera Community Foundation Board for nine years, is a member of the Cordera Madera Lions Club, volunteers for Bread and Roses, the local nonprofit, and assists at evening concerts at the Redwoods in Mill Valley. Now, therefore, the town council of the town of Cordera Madera does hereby present the two thousand and twenty-three Citizen of the Year Award to Mark Gold Rosen, and expresses its profound appreciation for his significant and invaluable contributions to the town of Cordera Madera.
You're here.
Well, as indicated in the um, commendation, Barbara and I moved here thirty years ago with our children when they were five and three, and uh, we've really enjoyed this special community uh, for raising our children and for living here and uh, for getting involved in uh, the town, the school system, the sports, and most recently in the uh, summer concert series. And uh, with respect to the latter, um, I just want to say thank you to the town for all the support the town has given to the summer concerts. Uh, that has helped tremendously in terms of uh, uh, Public Works closing the street alongside the park, which has made it much safer and much more enjoyable for the attendees, um, for uh, cooperation with um, with all the other things that uh, Public Works does uh, for the concerts, so I'm very honored to receive this award, and thank you very much for recognizing me this year, and I'll continue to do my best to help out in the town.
All right. Thank you again. So now we'll move on. Uh, this is for Bob Valentino. Uh, the town of Cordera Madera commendation for Bob Valentino, Stefano's, two thousand and twenty-three Business Citizen of the Year. Whereas the Cordera Madera Chamber of Commerce has selected Bob Valentino, owner of Stefano's, located in Old Cordera Madera Square as its two thousand and twenty-three Business Citizen of the Year. And whereas Stefano's was the first solar-powered pizzeria in the United States, and it produces zero toxic emissions or greenhouse gases. And whereas Bob owns six Stefano's Pizza Restaurants throughout Marin County, and has made all of his managing partners, as he believes employees are the backbone of his success, and they deserve a piece of the action. And whereas he contributes to charities including hospice, Center for Attitudinal Healing, Lions Club, Saint Vincent's, Vivilon, and many others. And whereas Bob has been a longstanding member of the Cordera Madera Chamber of Commerce, as well as five other chambers throughout Marin, and he has regularly supported Cordera Madera's chamber events and participated in local events in town, including the Fourth of July Festival, Oktoberfest, and the annual Summer Sunday Concert Series, and whereas he has supported Little League, youth basketball, and soccer throughout the county, and has also contributed to and adopted classes at Kiddo for over twenty-five years. And whereas Bob has also volunteered for Meals on Wheels, where he also encourages his staff to donate their time, and recently he ran a half-page ad in the Marin Independent Journal advertising free pizza to anyone who was hungry, no questions asked. Now, therefore, the town council of the town of Cordera Madera does hereby present the two thousand and twenty-three Business Citizen of the Year Award to Bob Valentino of Stefano's, and expresses its profound appreciation for his significant and invaluable contributions to the town of Cordera Madera.
Thank you very much. Um, as I told Julie when she originally gave me this award, I had no idea this was coming, and I'm just blown away. I'm so honored to be recognized by you. Really, really appreciate it. We've been in business in uh, in in Marin County for over fifty years. It was fifty years last year that we celebrated our anniversary. And uh, I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the uh, Stefano's Pizza. And um, I'm very proud of my managers, who are now my partners, so we're uh, we really are employee-owned, and I'm very, very, very proud of that. And uh, thank you very much again for everything. Appreciate it.
Excellent. All right, so now I just ask the council if we can move in front of the dice, and we'd like to give a photo op to both the Citizen of the Year and the Business Citizen of the Year. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to you guys.
Thank you very, very much.
Right.
We'll be having more fun, but.
Thank you both.
Well, what a fantastic opportunity. So with that, though, we'll close presentations, uh, and then we'll move on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff, or the public may request removal of an item for discussion. Is there anyone on the council that would like to remove an item? Anyone in staff? Is there anyone in the public? Anyone online?
We do not have any hands raised or emails regarding the consent calendar.
All right, seeing none, I'll come back for uh, motion.
Okay, I make the motion approve i- items four A through fourteen.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mary Lee.
Yes.
So with that.
Motion carries.
We'll close the consent calendar and move on to number five, which is public hearings. Public hearing five A is the consideration and possible introduction of a resolution amending fees and rates for advanced life support and basic life support services and supplies. Ruben?
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor Lee and members of the town council. Um, so we're here today to um, propose a draft resolution amending the fees and rates for both our advanced and basic life support uh, services that we provide, so it's basically comes down to our ambulances fees that we charge our insurance companies every time we uh, transport a person to the hospital. Um, a little bit background is um, periodically we, um, when I say we as the town and the fire agency, review uh, transport fees and how we're maintaining um, both expenditures and revenues, and we try to stay at cost neutrals we possibly can through the program. Um, and a little background on that, um, the last time we raised the fees or we reviewed the process was in December of two thousand and seventeen, and we approved a resolution, amended the fee schedule in January of two thousand and eighteen. Since then, we haven't raised the fees for any kind of medical transport and a kind of cost recovery since two thousand and eighteen. Um, and looking at our revenue where we're at or ambulance fees where we're at today compared to every other ambulance provider within the county, uh, we had fallen behind tremendously, and with the cost of living increases, um, inflation and so forth, we've fallen roughly around fifteen to eighteen percent behind uh, where the current market is for ambulance revenue uh, fees. Uh, so what we're doing is uh, we did a cost analysis at the end of two thousand and twenty-two as part of the Department of Health Healthcare Services, they're providing a program called Public Provider uh, Ground Emergency Medical Transport, where basically we're trying to justify what our ambulance's fees are, so we can try to recuperate as much as we possibly can through the Medicare and Medi-Cal program through the federal government. So through that cost analysis, we realize that we, once again, we're far below where we need to be, and then the state actually takes a look at every ambulance fee within our general region and bases your reimbursement fees based on that. So if we fall behind, then everyone throughout the county or the northern region of California falls behind on the amount of money that we can um, recoup from the federal government. So it, uh, through the cost analysis, the look that we were approx- approximately in the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one fiscal year, we were probably around nineteen hundred dollars or so for transport fees. However, we were charging right around the eighteen hundred dollar mark. So to bring us up to about where we're supposed to be in the county, we're proposing a fifteen percent increase in ambulance um, fees for uh, reimbursement from our insurance companies, and that puts us um, still not the lowest within the county, but not the highest. So when we did a cost comparison of everyone else in the county, it would put us uh, just one step above San Rafael Fire Department and still below the highest, which was Nevada Fire District, which last raised their fees in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, with that, um, I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, so let's open up for questions. Any questions?
Just one. So how often do you usually review these? Is this kind of a normal five-year, six-year thing, or?
Hey, we have the opportunity to raise fees annually by resolution. However, we try to see where the market is and kind of where our expenditures are, and we try to stay as cost neutral as possible. Uh, this is the first time I reviewed it as being the new fire chief for the last, well, I won't say new fire chief, so I can't say that. I've been here for three years, so no excuses there, but as things are coming across my desk when um, either another agency does it, I start reviewing our numbers to try to see where we compare um, to some of the other transport agencies in the county.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chief. Um, yeah, definitely. You know, if we haven't touched rates in five years, I think we know that costs have not uh, stayed the same over the last five years. I was just curious, how close to cost neutral does this get us?
Um, I think we'll probably be about another three to five percent below, um, and what I'm trying to do is get us as close to as pair with the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, because we are a subcontractor underneath their op area ambulance rights, so the more we are in being cost or cost comparable to them, I think it'll get us closer to being cost neutral.
Got it. Thank you.
Is there, and thank you.
You're welcome.
For that presentation, um, is there a limit to the amount you can raise at any, at one time?
Um, I don't think there's a set rate, but what we try to do is not to obliterate, you know, just pull a number out of our hat, is what we try to do is look at cost comparisons and where our expenditures are compared to what our revenues are, and I think that cost analysis that we did in two thousand and twenty-two kind of looked at where we should be. So it takes a look at all your medical transport, non-medical transport, which is the paramedic program and equipment and everything on the fire engines, and then um, your salaries, your budgets, and everything takes everything into consideration that it does a cost analysis of where you should be. And so we're, we're on average in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, should be about nineteen hundred.
Yeah, the California Constitution uh, regulates stringently municipal finance, uh, including taxes and fees. So with a few exceptions, generally speaking, um, a fee has to be, um, you ca- you, you can't raise it to an extent that you make a profit. You have to do a fee, you'd have to do an analysis to show uh, that the fee is uh, simply recovering government's costs in providing the service. So there, there, while there isn't a restrict, if you can justify your cost analysis, there's not a restriction on what you can do, but you do have to do a cost analysis, and so because you can't make a profit, there, there is a self-restriction in that.
Good. Uh, any other questions? Seeing no questions on the dice, uh, I'll open up to public. Is there any questions uh, in the room? Any public comment online?
We do not have any hands raised, and um, we have no emailed public comment on this item.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the dice for final discussion. Uh, we're looking for um, an introduction to the resolution as requested.
I can definitely support this, and I am happy to introduce resolution number oh-two, two thousand and eighteen.
I can second I went.
Uh, just to correct that, there is um, you might be misreading the staff report, but there is no um, number with the resolution at this time. It will be brought back in August for the actual adoption. So we would just introduce the resolution.
One.
Really? Okay. Attorney, uh, who definitely knows a lot more than I do, um, says this could be introduced, so it does not have an assigned resolution number, so if you would just um, um.
Sure, so I'm happy to uh, move adoption of the unnumbered resolution. Um, let's see, uh, rescinding Exhibit A of resolution number, oh, here we go, that's what I misread. Rescinding Exhibit A of resolution number oh-two, two thousand and eighteen, and setting fees for basic life support and advanced life support services and supplies and adopting new fees.
Yeah, and I can second, and I want to thank Chief Martin for your report, and also it sounds to me like since we haven't raised rate the fee since two thousand and eighteen, where city attorneys saying it sounds like they're reasonable and they're within um, the law that, that we can get, that we can do. So again, I appreciate the report you gave us.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Um, okay, so we have a motion in a second. Thank you, everyone, for the help on that. Um, Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mary Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion carries.
All right, so with that, we'll close the uh, the public hearings, and we'll move on to item six, the business items, uh, starting six A, discussion of options and provide direction to staff to draft a reusable foodware ordinance.
All right. Yes, we can get it. We have, we have a pretty much text-heavy uh, presentation for you this evening, but good, good evening, uh, Mayor Lee, council members. Um, thank you for the opportunity to discuss with you again the uh, reusable foodware options and ordinances that have been, um, this is really a follow-up from our February twenty-first meeting. Um, where at the time, uh, the town council heard a presentation by county staff regarding the model uh, reusable foodware ordinance, I'll call it that, there's, there are several different components to it. Um, but that's what it was titled at the time. And I have to say, um, in reviewing the uh, conversation and discussion that the council had at that time, it was really a a extremely thoughtful discussion that the council had uh, with a lot of good information um, and comments provided and feedback provided not only for staff to use in this um, uh, presentation tonight, but also back to the county and others who are listening. Um, I wanted to thank also our, our business owners and those who um, provided comment on the reusable foodware ordinance at that time and who have been working um, with us since that time, or at least providing uh, informal comments um, to staff um, in advance of staff bringing this back to you this evening. So what we're really going to do tonight, um, as you are aware, and as uh, is discussed in the, in the staff report, um, staff has, has committed to bringing back um, at the end of the last meeting in February, some different policy options um, and implementation options for the council to consider, and hopefully be able to provide staff with some direction um, based on the options that we've provided you. Um, some, some options for staff to pursue and, and, and direction to, to um, come back to you at a future meeting um, with uh, uh, implementation as essentially a, a, either ordinance, the three options, either, you know, following state law, um, uh, and we can go to the next slide. I think these are the. You can go to the next slide. Yeah, I think this will talk about the, oh, sorry, you were already at the options. There we go. Yes. My bad. Um, uh, really, the three options before you that staff has outlined is, is really use, following the existing state law, uh, and encouraging really some additional um, education and uh, compliance um, strategies um, without adoption of a town ordinance, or we may consider actually just clarifying state law through a simplified ordinance that follows state law. Uh, we'll talk about that more in a minute. Um, the model ordinance, adopting the mo- county model ordinance that you, was discussed at the February twenty-first meeting. Um, frankly, that was based on the comments we got from council at the time. Um, that was not something that really staff is recommending be pursued based on those comments. Uh, but nonetheless, wanted to put it here, uh, because there are um, that's still an option that's available at relatively um, uh, it has some cost implications around county being able to uh, and enforce that. Um, saving the town some resources of time um, uh, and, and expense um, on that one. Um, and then three, uh, what we try to do with the third option in front of you is really present a um, modified county ordinance that attempts to really take a lot of the comments that we heard and try to um, massage it essentially with some fairly significant modifications to address uh, some of the concerns we heard, some of the goals, um, really about waste reduction and hopefully trying to get as much compostable material um, uh, be utilized in our restaurants and food vendors throughout town, and um, again, also try to simplify uh, some of the comments we heard, where it's that it was overly complicated, hard to comply with, and also maybe difficult to enforce. Um, so try to really craft at least a draft of an ordinance uh, that the town council could consider as a, you know, maybe a, a third option here and something to pursue. Um, go to. Go, um, so the intent really is, uh, to go through the three options a little bit more detail. Love to hear that, the, the councils. Um, any questions that you may have, obviously have Amy and both Rebecca, who are central to the last presentation or answering questions, and I've been, I've been working with on this as well um, for the last couple of months. Um, but uh, we're, we're going to be answering any questions that you have, but really, option one, just to, to break that down a little bit more. Um, this is actually a state law that's already effective, um, as of Ja- of uh, January first, two thousand and twenty-two. And really, the goal of that state legislation was more about waste reduction. Um, and so really, um, tried to prohibit uh, the use of single-use foodware accessories um, in food facilities throughout the state. Um, and this, there's, this, uh, this is, um, unless somebody really went another way and, and requested a single-use foodware accessory, and that's for dine-in facilities, so restaurants where you are actually eating in their restaurants. Um, uh, foodware accessories uh, included things like forks, knives, spoons, condiment packets, straws, et cetera, toothpicks, things like that, but did not include plates uh, and cups and other things that you might use in a restaurant. Um, and uh, lastly, this is still uh, something that we think at this point, although we could explore this further, that the town would likely um, uh, have to enforce, although we would be, um, that could be something that we discuss further with the county is if this option, we wanted to use this option going forward, and the council directed us to move forward with this. Um, you know, uh, I already mentioned. See. To, we can move on to option two, actually. Uh, the countal- mo- county model ordinance, uh, I don't, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here with this option. Um, we discussed this at length in the last meeting. We have the uh, old staff report from the February twenty-first Town Council meeting to refer to, uh, but essentially goes mu- much beyond state law and really um, uh, prohibits the use of um, any uh, reusable or non-reusable foodware for dine-in um, facilities, so everything would have to be basically reusable foodware uh, at dining restaurants. Uh, and then anything to go would have to be natural fiber-based compostable foodware and um, uh, things like the BPI-certified products and bioplastics that are used at several of our restaurants, um, such as Amy's or Starbird, uh, those would be prohibited entirely. Um, and option three, um, which again is this ordinance that we have drafted that tries to uh, really um, respond to some of the comments we heard uh, would, would significantly differ from the county model ordinance, and I've highlighted just a few of the major ways in which those um, uh, this potentially would uh, could be drafted to uh, address some of the con- comments. uh could be drafted to uh address some of the comments. Uh, number one, really being redefining what is compliant, non-reusable foodware to include uh BPI certified and other third-party compostable products. So those um uh, this would be really for uh takeout um service and uh allowing BPI certified products like those that are used at Amy's, those that are used at Starbird, um picking a pickle uses some of these as well, and allowing those products, whereas the county ordinance um basically requires those to be natural fiber-based products. Um, and I think even through the county's ordinance, they acknowledge that some of those products are not uh actually in existence or don't aren't actually useful uh be are able to be utilized today, and so they would have to create an exception list to those products that uh for takeout. Um, secondly, uh, there's a whole section in the county model ordinance that required a twenty-five percent, twenty-five cent non-reusable cup charge for things like coffee uh and tea or hot liquids and I think that would even apply to cold liquids again where um there aren't actually natural fiber-based products to use for those sorts of um beverages. Um, this seemed to be pretty cumbersome in implementation for uh op- restaurant operations. Uh, and so the draft um ordinance and and frankly also seemed to assume that that would affect behavior and actually um change behavior where people would no longer actually pay um the additional charge and coming with a reusable cup of their own. The draft ordinance that is uh included as an attachment um to your staff report essentially removed that requirement. Uh, simplifying again the ordinance. And um also allowing in combination with allowing for the BPI certified products, um, there's a suitable replacement there that would uh be able to be used for those um types of beverages. Um, three, we slightly narrowed the applicability of the ordinance in relation to town operations. Um, this was actually something that Nevada had previously done in their ordinance and was adopted and actually the county accepted um uh in terms of of the model ordinance, and so it simply um requires that uh for town operations where we are actually in contract with or have an agreement with uh a food vendor that is providing um food uh to one of our, um, you know, uh, one of our events or cosponsored events, they would need to comply with um uh the foodware ordinance or reusable foodware ordinance, but it would not require essentially uh those that may be essentially um using town facilities um or have a uh reservation for a picnic or something like that at one of our uh picnic sites in Town Park to be subject to the town ordinance as well, or the, sorry, the reusable foodware ordinance as I think fairly uh the county model or or model ordinance might be um sort of interpreted to require. And then lastly, uh there's uh also one of the things that we could consider and to discuss this evening is understanding that there is some there are some operations in town, business operations that actually do not use any reusable foodware today. Um, there potentially could be some um discussion around uh extending the time uh period by which such uh restaurants or food vendors uh could comply with the new uh draft ordinance um that requires reusable foodware, including plates and cups um in their restaurants. Sorry, I'm your option three, great. Um, so those are the basically the three main um options that we have before you this evening. There are differences with respect to enforcement that we could get into. And um I don't know if Rebecca or Amy have anything you wanted to add at this point. You know, there is a next step as well if if the council um let's just skip to the steps on this. Um, I wanted to really get feedback. This is an iterative process. I think it's important that we're coming back to you and getting feedback about where to move. Uh, next with this uh process and discussion around um reducing waste in town and moving away from from plastics and petroleum-based pe- plastics. Um, but wanted to get feedback, discuss these options, you know, if there is more information that you feel is necessary as well at this time, we could also come back again and and provide that information in order to um um give you the opportunity to really come to some conclusions about next steps for staff to pursue. Um. You know, if a modified ordinance is desired, um, really, we would um like some feedback about the components that we've highlighted tonight um in staff report um about some of those changes, and if the that's the right direction. We've uh pursued. And uh would obviously also maybe consider some of the uh potential um financial support or other components of an ordinance or program uh that council might want to consider as part of this. Uh, and if we do want to come back, um, direction is given to come back with a a draft ordinance, we certainly would then come back um internally and staff would uh refine an ordinance for uh consideration of an upcoming council meeting as soon as we could are able to. So with that, I'll conclude, um, unless there's anything else that Rebecca want to add at this time. Um. And and certainly we can elaborate, um, if there are questions as well, which I know there will be. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Please.
Thank you for that report, and thanks for everybody who's shown up to talk about this really important topic. Um, I want to start going back. I have a question about where the enforcement is now for the state law. What do we have anything in place for that?
We do not. I will a little bit editorialize and say, um, I looked at this law, it was amended eight times as it made its way through the legislature. Um, and as a result, um, I would say it's not a terribly well-drafted law. It doesn't answer a lot of questions that I'm sure everyone has about it. So, um, you know, it the the ordinance prior ordinance required uh reusable straws in restaurants, and that was done through the standard food retail code, and it made the county environmental health office responsible for enforcement. For some reason, during this process, some decision was made to take it out of that and to have cities and counties designate an enforcement agency. It's an odd fit because we the the FDA puts together a model food code, which is 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 based on how the latest health and safety standards, and they update it, I think, every six or seven years, and then the states decide if they're going to adopt it and modify it. And so we have a whole process of restaurant inspections based on this system. So the fact that this is outside that system makes it really complicated to understand how it's supposed to really work. Um, it does put on the city or county to designate an enforcement agency, which is unusual. Um, and so we have not yet designated, and I think the next question is, can we designate the county to enforce the state law? That's a really good question. This is a new law. There are no cases interpreting it. So I don't have a really great answer other than I don't know how the town can require the county to do something if the county doesn't consent to doing it. And so, um you know, I there the the state law allows cities and counties to contract for services, um particularly in the public health arena. So I think you know, that would be possible, but could we force the county if they absolutely say they're not going to? I mean, probably without not without going to court.
So the county, since they are asking for a law, they prefer a law that is more on not just on the reduction of waste side, but also on regulating the materials. Would that affect? Say, we went for the state law, and then we had something locally that we wanted to add to it. Would the county say, well, we're not going to enforce the state law because you're not following the county law that we prefer? I mean, that the the county prefer prefers.
I I don't know that we know the answer to that yet, um, because we we haven't made determinations about where we want to go. I think, um, you know, when when council makes that decision, certainly I would recommend high-level talks between Adam and the county executive officer to figure out where the county is on this. Um, we we do have generally a real spirit of cooperation between the counties and the cities and towns within Marin. Um, so I would say we don't have an answer yet.
Okay. Okay. Um, so that was kind of my my pre-question question. Um. So. You know, I think I'll leave it at that for now for questions, and I'll wait until I hear some more from the rest of the council and the public.
We'll make sure to circle back.
Thank you.
Next up.
Yeah, I just have a few. You know how many towns and or cities in Marin have either adopted the county, the state? Which way, a modif- modified version?
Yeah, well, let's start with the, so the county model ordinance has been adopted by, um, I think ten of the eleven. Rebecca, do you know exactly? I think it's well, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna qualify that by saying there have been some cities such as Nevada that's slightly modified. Well, it could be substantive. I mean, but it's it it is fairly substantive, but um, they did modify it. Um, my understanding was that that was uh accepted by the county as sort of they would still do enforcement, um, even though it didn't apply to um the extent of town operations as the model ordinance did. It really just applied to the food vendors in contract or by agreement with with the city of Nevada. Um, but everybody
County's um reusable foodware ordinance website lists uh unincorporated Marin and the eleven Marin cities and towns and links to any adopted ordinances and for Belvedere and Corder Madara, it both says under consideration, and for unincorporated Marin and the rest of the Marin cities and towns, uh, they link to adopted ordinances.
Right. Adopted. They have, and I, as far as state law, I don't know around the state, other cities that have actually authorized an enforcement agency.
Okay, and then if we adopt our own ordinance, I want to say with their own self-enforcement. I think you have in here that the community development person
Yeah.
would oversee that. Can you just kind of expand? What does that entail? Does that mean uh we they would have to hire a person, or is there something on staff that's going to go out and do inspections?
Yes, so so we do have code enforcement um uh official uh who would be responsible uh for doing enforcement of the ornament ordinance at a local level. Um, you know, predominantly that enforcement is going to be complaint-based um um based on the resources obviously available to do such um enforcement activity. Um, we, I think we have about, you know, maybe around forty to fifty food vendors in town, um, that would be covered by this ordinance. Um, and and I, when I say this ordinance, I'm actually, I'm speaking to um, I guess, option three, um, because we're, that's the one that's um would require essentially assumption is that this point that would require local enforcement. And you know, I think this is something that would have to be discussed further again with, I think, with council um with the town attorney, Amy, but I also see potentially the the proactive component of this, and this is something that's being considered with actually short-term rental ordinance of doing maybe some number of of food vendors or food facilities could be um proactively enforced each year, for example. Um, but that's still to be determined. So, um, but that I I think that's um would certainly be a new uh work program area for code enforcement official to take on, but I think could be fit in with its within his current work program.
Okay, so it sounds like it would fall on um code enforcement.
Correct.
It sounds like there would be potentially, there's no, it sounds like it'd be self-regulated in the sense that there would be no annual type inspection type thing or periodic inspection by the town unless there's a complaint.
We're, we'd still work on it, but I, but I, and I just one component, the community and development director in it would be responsible for interpretations and um of certain parts of the ordinance, for example. Um, some of the definitions of what is a takeout facility versus a dine-in facility, um, there would be, I mean, one of the advantages of doing a local ordinance is we could define that more specifically. Um, and so there could be um opportunity to uh clarify or have a have the community development director actually make a determination about certain uh food facilities that are predominantly takeout be takeout facilities and subject to those rules under the ordinance, uh, rather than how the county sort of has maybe a different way of actually making those determinations.
Uh, I think with enforcement, there's essentially three options. One is we could do annual inspections of restaurants, and you'd basically have a checklist of what is ordinance would require, and someone would go and inspect. Second, a- and and some laws we enforce, we do that way, like the food facility inspections for health and safety. Other enforcement that we use or is is a complaint-driven system, which is really common for cities because um it is often too can, you know, we, no one has the budget to be able to inspect everywhere all the time. And so, um, if if there's a complaint, I mean, it's similar to how violations of conditional use permits and zoning complaint comes in, then our enforcement officer would go and inspect and see i- if it was compliant or not. The third could be some kind of um self-certification system where, you know, we provide the information um as part of license renewal and the business sort of self-certified that they understand the law and they're compliant. And then if the town wanted to, they could, you know, they could authorize some just random, you know, a random sampling of inspections um to see about. So there's a fair amount of leeway in the process that town wants to develop for inspections, keeping in, you know, idea of you want to enforce the law that you have, but keeping it reasonably um uh, you know, budget-friendly.
And then since the last time we discussed this, do you know if there's been any additional feedback from either the chamber or any of the local businesses?
Do you want to speak to that, Rebecca? I mean.
Thank you, council. There has not been um any emailed public comments received. I I was told to expect some this week. They may not. They didn't arrive in time for the meeting. Um, the most of the feedback that I had been getting since the last meeting when we did some site visits and some walkabouts were that people are generally supportive of the ordinance. There are some more onerous parts to uh transferring operations to um reusable foodware in that those that do not currently use reusable foodware, that do have dishwashers, have industrial dishwashers that are intended for washing um prep pans and cooking um items, not individual plates and cups and forks and knives and spoons and and the quantity that they would need to in order to keep up with um their business operations and also that their business operations. And also that hand washing is onerous and, um, a difficult, um, new operation to undertake. But for the most part, most of the businesses that we spoke with were, um, already mostly compliant, predominantly compliant. Um, interested in doing what they could within the parameters of available options. But just acknowledging that there's an expense involved.
Can we clarify which, uh, or which option they would be compliant to?
Oh, this was, this was discussing the county's ordinance at the time. Uh, this, this new ordinance.
But I think in, in general, we got the bulk of our comments prior to the February twenty first and at the February twenty first, uh, council meeting, we've had some follow-up conversations. Um, and I've been in touch with, uh, Julie at the chamber, um, to, to receive general feedback. Um, but there haven't been a ton of like very specific comments, do this, do that, you know, this is, um, you know, a lot of that came in at the February twenty first meeting, which I thought was very, um, thoughtful comments at that time.
And then I, I have a few more. This is mostly around option three, if that helps. Um, has there been any contact or outreach to the community groups? More specifically, I'm thinking like the Lions Club, the Beautification Committee, or, um, even the Community Foundation. Cause it seems like if I'm reading this right, that would wind up potentially applying to those community groups.
Yeah, and certainly if, if the council directed us to, you know, wanted to go down that road, we would, we could do that. But no, we haven't reached out directly to those organizations at this time about, um, uh, potential ramifications for those, um, organizations and how they would have to change operations at certain events.
Okay. And then along same lines, would this put, potentially apply to food caterers using a community center?
Uh, does if they have agreements with the town.
Okay.
Um, and I think that's how it's worded right now in the draft. And again, a lot of the, you know, this is what we put in front of you. The council was a real draft to at least start the conversation. And certainly if there were additional uh, recommendations or suggestions that the council felt were important, would be important to include. Um, there's, that's one of the advantages. We have all the ability to sort of massage the language and change the language, um, to include those sorts of things.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And we have a few more, but that's it for now.
Thanks, Adam. Um, so one question, kind of touching on a, a question that, uh, Rosa and Fred both asked, just in terms of we're, we're looking at a number of different options, uh, that could involve town enforcement. And I just wanted to get your sense in terms of our bandwidth. Is that something that you're concerned about? Or do you feel more like that's something where if that's a route that we wanted to go? We could definitely find a way to fold that into our operations.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned. Um, you know, I think what we have to think about though, on, you know, longer term, more ordinances that we do uh, adopt, um, puts more of a burden on um, our code enforcement capabilities and capacity at this time, you know, given the ordinance. And I'm also thinking about a couple of other ordinances that we have coming down the road. I think we're, um, positioned to do that work, um, in-house. I mean, it's, it's one of those things that there are busier times and then there's, if it all hits at once, you're going to be, um, impacted. But I think what we also need to do is, and can help ourselves by creating pretty clear regulations and ways and procedures around enforcement, uh, so that if it does end up uh, in that sort of track, we, we have a clear direction and this can be pretty easy to follow through with.
Got it. Thank you. And then, uh, just one clarifying question about the county ordinance. So option two, and specifically the twenty-five cent cup charge, that is a twenty-five cent charge on a cup, a single-use cup that is already uh, like compostable, correct? Because that's required. Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. Okay. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Is correct. Um, the county ordinance, uh, accepts, um, from the twenty-five cent fee, those who have an EBT card, those who have a WIC card, and then people with disabilities without any definition. Um, which I, I think puts, you know, a burden on the business to, to try to make that determination and um, that was one of the problems that I see with the ordinance, um, particularly, uh, during the morning coffee rush, I that seems like a lot.
Actually, can I just, uh, clarify that the county's ordinance said that all food, said that all food vendors shall charge customers twenty-five cents at the point of sale for every non-reusable cup provided unless they are exempt under this chapter. Was that, was that the question?
Yes.
But non-reusable includes a compostable cup, so it would apply to a compostable cup is if they're, if you don't bring your own or you buy a reusable cup.
I think, yeah, I think it gets more, I think the challenge with that is they were also required that it be of natural fiber.
Right, which, which doesn't seem to exist right now.
Non-compostable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just a couple of questions, um, from me. So this whole thing about the BPI certified plastics, it's, it's really a conundrum because Amys and others that are using those are actually spending additional money to do the right thing. And then the county comes and says, well, we can't compost that yet. So if we strike out on our own and say, we're going to allow these things that we know are probably the future, just the rest of us need to catch up with that future. What is that due to the county system now?
Well, I don't, I, I don't think it changes necessarily the county system, um. The, uh, essentially, I, 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 I don't know if I'm quite understanding.
I'm just thinking, what, what, what impact are we having on these, on the overall county by being the only ones to allow these materials in the compost?
Well, um, you know, I think there's a couple of things. One is it, it's, it doesn't change, um, they're not going to be enforcing the rules likely in Corder Madara. So from an enforcement standpoint, you know, it, it doesn't affect the county's system there, but actually just from a waste standpoint, I don't think it it would likely be deposited and, um, the standardized waste stream rather than a compostable stream. I don't know exactly how that gets done. Is that, maybe that's what you're.
Yes. Does any, I mean, does anybody know what happens when these things get into the compost? Eli does. Are we allowed to do that?
So, may I, uh, also have a clarifying question within that? Ultimately, if Amy sells it, it's not point of sale and point of disposal.
Right.
It goes home and it goes to your compost. Do you put bioplastics in your compost outside of Amy's?
No.
No, you don't, but other people do. So like, I use bioplastics and I put it in my compost or dirty paper or whatever, right? Irrespective of what the county's needs are. So like, part of it is, is that's really what we're talking about. And that's what they want to try to control through the point of sale and you know, we can get, get to comments later, but like, that's my question is, is like, that's the goal, right? That I understand is that they want to try to limit that, but so.
That's correct. It doesn't change where people deposit their actual single-use foodware, whether it's the bio, whether it's the BPI certified, or whether it's a, you know, a, a plastic piece of foodware.
And just one more from me. Um, so since Nevada revised the county ordinance and still convinced the county to do the endorsement, would that be possible for Corder Madara?
I, you know, it's definitely, as, as Amy said, I think that's something, that's a conversation we would, I would definitely have with the county, um, and discuss uh, that option and possibility, um, as a next step. Um, but I wanted to make sure that we were moving in that direction first before sort of engaging in that discussion.
All right, um. Did you want to circle back? Did you?
No, not yet.
Okay. All right. So a couple of questions. You, you mentioned maybe for us to, to think about uh, assistance grants, maybe if we look at option three, would that be like a, a hardship assistance grant? Or would that be open to anybody? Have you thought about it? Okay. So we should help define that if we decide to.
That would be helpful.
Okay. So with the county, they say that there's adopted ordinances, which is a state mandated enforcement where they've decided to do the enforcement, but are they claiming that they're all the model ordinance on the website?
Um, yes, they are. The, on the county's website, uh, they list the cities and towns that have adopted the county's reusable foodware ordinance.
With, with or without modification?
It doesn't specify modifications, but we do know that, I believe, San Rafael and Nevada both.
Yeah, the two large ones.
amended that, that one part that pertains to the city.
All right, that helps. Thank you. So does the state law have any requirements for, uh, when, when, once the, um, enforcement agency has been identified, what the enforcement agency like has to do periodically? There's no definition of that enforcement.
It does have a fine.
It has the fines, but does it have like how you basically go about doing the enforcement?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it does. And maybe I'll wait for Amy to confirm, but.
No, it just sets the fines and the, you, you give, I think, um, a warning first. First and second is a notice of violation, but you don't actually find till the third, but it doesn't that stipulate annual inspections versus complaint versus some other method.
Okay. Uh, if the council was to ask you, um, to explore the three options on the legal and staffing requirements for enforcement, could you make a best case recommendation? Come back to the council and include that in the ordinance. Okay. Um, could you meet with, uh, Fred's identified, uh, local constituency groups? Um, and if there's any local concerns, address them in any, uh, third party, um, you know, third, option three ordinance.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be our goal.
Okay. Um, so I'll end with that. Rosa, would you like to ask another question? Okay, great.
I just have one more, just to clarify. So whoever's been in touch with Amy's, they are willing to transition to the plates and knives and cups in the restaurant? Or are they fighting all of that?
I, I certainly haven't had that direct conversation with them about, at this time with what we've drafted. Or since we've drafted sort of this option three, um, discussion, you know, the, the state law does in our view, require that they go to at least the reuse, the, the reusable forks, knives and spoons. And so, um, it doesn't appear that they are doing that at this time. So I think there is some, but there is some adaptation that is, would seem to be needed to comply with state law currently. Um, but we're talking about, yes, and an additional, then I think the plates or or other items that may be used, um, to dine in with, um, being reusable as well. So I, I, it certainly would likely have some, um, impact to operations. I think that was discussed at the last, uh, meeting. Um, but certainly there's already some work that I think, um, would be required in that regard, uh, pursuant to state law today. Um, I don't, I can't speak if they're actually, you know, what their position is. Um, I was hoping they would be, uh, commenting at this meeting.
So just.
Get a response.
Just one more, if I may.
Chamber.
We did reach out and so.
Okay. And so this might be one of the examples where we would allow extra time if we were really having them change their business systems in order to comply, that, that we could allow extra time for them to do that. Is that correct?
Yes, um, I think, uh, certainly something we could explore. And I do have questions about if the state law already requires certain aspects to be um, in compliance, how that would work, but um, we certainly would, could explore an option and try to figure out a way to allow some additional time for those businesses that just have to, um, change operations in order to sort of move in this direction.
Thank you. So since the state hasn't specified, um, how often we should look at a restaurant to see if they're in compliance with their laws. I'm, I'm trying to get an idea of what's really intended here. Or if, or is anything actually intended at all? Or, you know, I, it's a little confusing. Um, and like you said, because we don't, we probably, we know at this point that there are restaurants that are in Corder Madara that are not complying with state law at the moment.
Right. And I think at first is, I, I did have a typo originally. I think it actually went into effect January twenty twenty-three. Because I'm seeing, um, all sorts of cities.
Is, that, that's also when the county wanted us to initially consider it and adopt it.
Yeah. So, so it is in, I mean, it is in effect now.
Right.
But obviously people are just coming to grips with what it means. Um, I do think the state intended this to be an enforceable ordinance. I, I will, uh, enforceable law. I will say the penalties are really low. Um, two warnings before the penalties. So I think there was probably a recognition that this may be costly to restaurants to, and so some restaurants could make the determination that getting fined was better way to go. I suspect there were just, you know, there were eight amendments to this and there was a lot of discussion about what to do. I mean, the original law actually defined um, in person dining, which would have actually been helpful had that survived. So yeah, um, I, I think generally I will say if the state is putting a dictate on a city or county, they don't get into the, so much of the details in terms of enforcement, they'll do the penalties. I think there's also whether this is a state mandated program and so cities and counties are entitled to reimbursement. I think it is. And I think, you know, there's that. So, um, you know, I, I, I think as this goes on, we'll learn more. We'll see what other jurisdictions in California are doing. And I would not be shocked if it gets amended next year and some different provisions are in there. But I think, um, I think everyone, you know, it certainly shows support and it was, it was mostly around the, the wasteful, you know, the author did it, I think, as a result of COVID and all the takeout dining. And the fact that like, you know, when you get your delivery, there's like packets of stuff included. And the idea was, let's not do that anymore. Um, but I think the legislature wasn't too concerned with how this was all going to play out on a practical level.
And do we have any idea about the future of recycling Marin? Like is, um, WM Earth Care, are they going? Have you, do you have any idea if they're going to be able to recycle bioplastics anytime soon or?
Um, no, although I do recall at the last meeting that was discussed and, and asked of, I think, one of the county environmental health, um, officials. Um, I think the director was here at that time or on, on Zoom and, um, he didn't commit to anything, but did acknowledge that that was a potential, um, change to their waste management that could happen. And it's not necessarily way off in the two distant future. So I, um, but that was just sort of summarizing the comments that we had at the last meeting. So, uh, but nothing new.
May I ask a question of another council member? Uh, Eli, I think you've actually, uh, looked into this a little bit more and visited the actual recycler and understand at a state level, some of the things they're dealing with. Could you share that with the council and staff, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, so, uh, one of the kind of more confusing issues, I think, like sub-issues to this whole topic is like bioplastics or compostable plastics. Uh, you know, they're marketed as being compostable and recyclable. That's what they say on them. Are they? Uh, it really varies. Um, so I think that's why it's helpful when we distinguish between BPI certified bioplastics and just bioplastics in general. Bioplastics in general can, may say that they are compostable or recyclable. Maybe, uh, you know, they, they may be, but they may not be. They may be made from, you know, hazardous chemicals, um, more like regular plastics and bioplastics. When they biodegrade, they may leave behind PFOS or, uh, microplastics or other like really harmful substances. Um, BPI. Um, BPI certified plastics, BPI certified bioplastics are scientifically proven to break down in a reasonable period of time. I think it's sixty or ninety days under like certain common composting conditions, conditions that you normally have in in any old industrial composting facility, not a special facility certified to break down into just CO2 and water, nothing else, no harmful chemicals left behind, nothing like that. Um, no, uh, you know, no PFAS, no microplastics. Um, so that's an important distinction to make. The problem um that you hit on and I so I actually was trying to figure all this out and I couldn't get a straight answer from anyone at the county. Um, and so I went on a little mission up to WM Earth Care and I toured their facility uh with one of their facility managers. And she was, you know, showing me the industrial composting heaps, telling me about how it works. Um, and I said, so interesting. So like, say I go to Amy's and I get one of their, you know, I get a drink and it's got the lid on it is a BPI certified microplastic. Um, I know that WM Earth Care is not does not accept uh any microplastics, whether they're BPI certified or not. The reason that they don't accept those is because they market their compost as organic and they cannot label it as certified organic under federal regulations. If it's got bioplastics of any kind in it, I think the reason that the regulation is that way is because it was written before there were bioplastics that did not leave behind hu- harmful residues. But regardless, so there's this outdated regulation because of this regulation, WM Earth Care will not accept any bioplastics. However, if you put your Amy's lid in the compost at home, it goes into your green can, it gets taken up to WM Earth Care, it goes into the composting heap and it composts into nothing but CO2 and water. So I asked the the I asked the woman giving me the tour. I said, so so you so you guys don't take this out? Because we I feel like there's a lot of kind of misinformation that goes around, whether you hear it from like earth care people or waste haulers, waste processors, like people, you know, whoever. Um, there's a lot of misinformation going around. People will say things like, oh, if you put that Amy's lid in your compost, they're gonna take it out somewhere, or worse, they'll take the entire compost like batch and just dump it, and that's a huge waste, right? That defeats the whole purpose of composting. That is not true, at least in our specific waste stream. So I asked the WM Earth Care uh uh official who was giving me the tour. I said, do you take this out or does it go in the heap? She says, nope, goes in the heap and it composts. I said, okay. And then on the way home from that, I was like, hmm. So I called uh, one of the vice presidents of Mill Valley Refuge. And I said, hey, so if I put my Amy's lid in my green can, what happens? Are you guys taking it out? And they said, no, we're, you know, we're not going through your compost. Like if we open the compost and there's like an office chair in there, we'll take that out and we'll find you. But you know, we're not going to go through and take out like Amy's lids and things. Um, so I was like, interesting. So it sounds like if I put my Amy's lid in the compost, it's gonna go up and it's gonna compost. And the answer is yes. Um, so but the dead end that we hit, right, if we adopt an ordinance, which I think is maybe ahead of our time, but you know, maybe still maybe still worth it, maybe not. I don't know. We'll get to that discussion. Um, but if we were to adopt an ordinance that allows uh BPI certified plastics into our waste stream by allowing restaurants to continue giving them out, the people that take them home and put them in their compost, they're gonna go to the compost and they're gonna compost. And that's frankly, exactly what I think we would all want. Um, but the problem is that we are not allowed to tell people that they're allowed to do that because Mill Valley Refuge says no and WM Earth Care says no. So that is like the dead end that we hit here. Um. I don't pretend to know really what.
So 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 um let me ask you another question. If you what you're saying is is that the BPI is organic by, but it's only a legal federal definition and law that's does not allow it to be accepted as organic currently. Is that what I'm hearing or is it at the state level?
It's at the federal level. It's the FDA.
So if the FDA changed it and said BPI plastics are organic and we had an ordinance that allowed BPI only sell, then we would be producing organic compost. And so that would be a profitable enterprise for them where they could easily label it with that exception.
That is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
So is it that the county does not quite? It sounds to me that the county is is saying that what Amy's has is not compostable and not acceptable, right?
The county is saying that they're not gonna, they're not gonna allow it. They're not gonna recognize it as something that you can compost because WM Earth Care says that they won't.
But they can.
But they actually do.
No.
They won't take it out, but they but their policy.
Saying is they won't take it out, but you said it does actually break down.
It does, yes.
Yeah, and they don't take it out.
Correct.
Whoa.
My thoughts exactly.
That's all I can say.
Okay. Okay, so so base uh does that help resolve your questions as far?
Clear as mud.
Cool. Eventually, it all becomes that. So. Sure.
Again, this may come up before. How many businesses in Corredor is this affecting or would it affect? The list.
Do uh I did receive a list from the county as well as our business license um agency, and we have approximately fifty um few slightly fewer than that uh would be subject to this because there's a catchall on here for for things, but um between forty and fifty.
Okay.
And that doesn't count uh the farmer's market vendors. So there will be more that would be subjected to that.
Does it count food trucks doing business in Corredor?
It is not.
Doesn't?
Yeah. Oh, no, I mean, this list that I have. The number that I have.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, they're using the definition of food facility in the model food code, this list, which includes vending machines and um Joanne's fabrics, because they sell candy. So the actual number is is probably a little bit less than that.
Uh, any more questions? Questions, Fred? No? Okay. All right. So with that, uh, I'll close the question at the dice and open it up to the public. Is there any public comment on this item? So you have three minutes.
Um, if we.
Hi. You're all run go run out of here screaming. Sorry, my name is Damon picking a pickle barbecue. Uh. And again, as I said last time, it's not that I don't believe in these ordinances or believe in compostable stuff or any of this stuff. I grew up right down the street. The problem is that the county is coming up with something for business owners in these cities to do to either reduce waste or we're making a business sale for the county and waste management. Because everything like Elijah said, this is all about a green waste company in the county having a contract. This has nothing to do with reducing waste. Um, like you just said, they put in there, breaks down. I mean, I use uh PLA and talc silverware, it's polylactic acid and talc and talcum. It's a hundred percent compostable, hundred percent. So biodegradable, even plastics and aluminum biodegrade. So there's a big distinction where people need to use there. But even the stuff I use is a hundred percent compostable anywhere in this country, except according to Marin County right now. And that's simply because they have a business deal for selling green waste. And that I'm not quite sure why we should all be paying for someone else's business. I mean, and and that's it. I have a list like a mile long, but you guys will go running out screaming. Um.
Right.
They um I've been visiting other places in Marin County that have adopted this and I haven't seen any compliance yet. So I'm kind of wondering, when is this compliance going to come in? And if health inspection, they're gonna be compliant. Um. I personally don't think compliance is even that hard, except for the hard things like some certain drinks, teaspoon, different things like that, or obviously things just aren't made. So you know, that's obvious, but I don't think most restaurants are gonna have a problem. I have no problem. We're switching back to real stuff. We just did it because of COVID. Um. I just think this has to do with, you know, the county made up a saw an opportunity. Uh, the state says, hey, we're gonna do this. And they said, hey, we have a greenways problem. Like I said in the last meeting, they haven't solved the greenway stream. My green waste leaves my restaurant clean. It goes into the bins at the mall. It gets dirty there. They take it away anyway. Then they come and also gonna find us. Left my restaurant clean. Once it goes in mall hands, not my problem anymore. Well, I mean, I'll just leave it that. This is for you guys to decide, but this is a county issue of the waste management. This is not my business issue. Anything that they put into effect is not gonna make a meaningful reduction in any ways. So I don't really want to have to charge my customers more or change things to make the county feel good versus making actually impact.
Thanks.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Hey, we have a hand raised from Peter Chase.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Um. Um, that gentleman's just commented, nothing like a bad idea ahead of its time. Um. But, you know, I would say that um this is a uh overreach in many ways. Um, it's apparent that it's a burden for businesses. Um, the resources for businesses do not exist yet to deal with this um on a small scale. Um, the materials are not in the commercial stream. There's no sort of reference standard and to what everybody said. How it what it is and how it ends up in the right or the wrong place is quite confused. Um. If a business is there, do they know where to buy the right product? Is there a commercial entity that's representing it? Does the dump say here, buy from this company? If you know, the resources are not particularly uh present for everyone to um access. Um, and I don't think it's the town's job necessarily to provide the uh that material to all of these businesses. Um, but the 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 um business world should be doing that. There should be some kind of entity that says here's where you buy this stuff. Here's what it is, and here's how it's acceptable. Um, but clearly have a problem with um the recyclers because they can't quite say what's acceptable in the bins. I've tried to reach them and find out about certain containers, and they can't tell me what is or isn't. It's really quite frustrating. Um, so um, I would suggest, since we're I'm running low on time here, that some modification to option three would be appropriate. I think that a sunset for um this ordinance or reexamination at a specific time period would be inappropriate if this came to fruition. Um. Think that uh there should be a time for compliance by businesses. Um, uh, quite a lengthy time because this is just another burden for businesses to have to absorb in this very difficult time. And it's not easy for these restaurants. Um. I think that um state needs to be pushed back on a little bit if we can write our uh representatives and say, hey, there's a problem with what you're specifying can happen or should happen in the waste stream. You gotta be more specific. So I would suggest doing as little as possible, but doing something to move this along at this time. Thank you.
Hmm, and we do not have any additional hands raised or email public comment on this item.
Okay. Right. So with that, I'll close public comment and bring it up to the dice. Um. Uh, do we want to have uh just general conversation? And then I think the uh staff, if we can give them direction about which option. And then within those, if we choose, I think, option three, there's also we'll have more control and discussion about how we would like to set staff into researching that further. So I think in the discussions, we can share our general understanding of everything we've received and then maybe uh help try to determine which option we want to talk through. And then after that, see if we need further deliberation. Is that acceptable? Okay. So.
I would like, yeah.
I'll go. Um, so it to me, it's like being a a an environmental activist all my life to be the one of only eleven that have not um passed the county ordinance. Um, it was bothering me, but it's like anything else. The more you sort of look into the weeds, the more you see uh the details that really need to be addressed. And I don't know how those other municipalities are planning on and on enforcing. The fact that they don't have to enforce it means sure, we'll pass it. You guys in the county, go ahead and 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 figure it out. So I think it's really smart that Corder Madera is taking the time to make sure we're passing something that's actually enforceable and that will actually serve some public good. And we already have some of the most uh advanced restaurants, Amy's, Pig in a Pickle, many others. I mean, I see a lot of bioplastics and you know, takeout containers that are cardboard, Ross's bra versus plastic and so forth. So and overall, I agree with getting rid of the twenty five cent cup for sure. Um, I do think we need to walk the walk as far as town organizations. I don't think the Lions Club or Beautification Committee or any of those should get a pass. If anything, the town needs to set an example. I think a lot of the best innovation from this comes from uh leaders saying this is how we're doing it. Don't you want to be like us? And that's what Amy's doing, and that's what Pig in the Pickle is doing. And that's what the town of Corder Madera could be doing. And the Women's Club and the Lions Club are already using regular plates, regular silverware almost all the time. And they they're eat in, so there's not the whole takeout uh problem there. So I I think they should walk the walk. I do think Amy's, you know, needs to do at least the basics because um while we can put our lids in, I don't know about some of the rest of the stuff that they have. Um, and then I would just say that whatever we come up with, let's tell the county that we would like them to enforce it for us because I hesitate to have this piled onto staff. We have a lot of things that the staff needs to do. And once we come up with a a real ordinance that really works, then maybe we'll swap it out and have the county pass that one and and then they can start actually enforcing it. So those are my comments. So I look at this from the standpoint of goals. So you know, what what is our goal with waste? What are our goals with waste? And um, you know, what's the least confusing way to get there? Um. So the first thing is to not create more confusion and to clear up the confusion as much as we can where it exists. So you know, this is a I I think that, you know, and I I mentioned this at the last meeting in February, that everybody stands in front of these bins and goes what, what do I do? And it almost seems like, you know, each restaurant, if we go with a option where each restaurant, you know, some have uh compo- compostables, some of them have um, you know, bio plastics, whatever. It's better to just label what goes in where, like the forks from my restaurant go into this bin. The cups go in this bin, not all these pictures and diagrams, because no one gets those. I at least I will say I don't. Everybody stands there and wonders what they are. So that is eliminating some of the existing confusion. Um, the other goal is to reduce waste overall. So when you want to reduce waste overall, you limit the amount of things, whether they're compostable or not, that actually are need to be in the system. So that means takeout, if anyone's gonna take something home, I'm sure they have their own forks and knives. So that the the county said, you know, they only get them if they're requested. Um, you just, if someone's taking it home, you figure they're gonna eat it there, or if you're delivering it, they're gonna eat it there. So that's gonna reduce waste. Um, and also, if you're eating in, use real plates and forks and knives and everything. Goal of reducing waste. Um, the other goal I see is educating the public and educating businesses. Once again, back to having everything clearly marked so people know what to do and also have businesses understand all these different products as they become available and how they make a difference and businesses can move forward and say, you know, this year I can, I'm gonna be using one product next year. I'm gonna switch to this better product. They'll have those options. So those are those are sort of just the way I'm seeing it is that we we kind of look at it from the standpoint of what do we want to see happen and what's the simplest, less, least onerous way of getting there? Um. And how the town can assist with that. So those are my thoughts for the moment.
Yeah, I'll just tee it up this way. I think I'm leaning towards option number three. I think that gives us the the most control and it gives us the ability to do what we think is best for our local businesses. I mean, we're not giving up control to the county to a certain degree. Um, I definitely think you need to do outreach to the community groups because I don't know if they have an understanding depending on which way this goes, what it really means to them. And that's just not like lines with their dinners twice a month. But that's, you know, Fourth of July, it's October. But that's, you know, Fourth of July, it's Oktoberfest, beautification, it, it's all those different events. So I think they need to have the understanding and what effect it may have on them. I do have a little bit of concern with enforcement because if we do our own enforcement, Michael Moriarty's group does a great job. I just don't know, do they have the expertise? Seems like there's a little level of expertise in this area. Do they have that level of expertise? And they may be able to get up to speed. But I think that's just, it's not a concern. It's just, I think something that we're gonna have to grapple with. I know it came up about potential grant money. I think that's something staff should look into, but I'm not sure how to go about that. Because if we're talking around that plus or minus, if there's forty businesses, I'm not sure how you do that. Especially if they're trying to make it equitable and maybe have a smaller business, you have a larger business like Amy's. I, I don't, I'm not sure how that would work. I think we need to provide as much timing as we can and not do a thing where, you know, if we pass this ordinance that we're giving people thirty days to, to, to put it into effect. I think you need to figure out the timing of it so that businesses do have sufficient timing on this. And I would agree with Peter. He brought it up, I think, not to sunset it, but somehow a year or two years, somehow we need to review this. And then kind of do a look back saying, what we're doing, does it make sense or does it not make sense? Sorry, I'm trying to read my notes, which I can't read. Yeah, so I think that's about it. Again, I think the big one is we're retaining control. And also I think, according to her, especially on the enforcement side, we have a certain culture here. And I think we need to keep that culture intact on how we deal with our local businesses. And I think that's another key aspect to this. I would mix the twenty five cents, by the way. So, yeah, I just, yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, first of all, Adam, great staff report. You and the team, uh, this is a very complex issue. And you guys did a really good job of presenting it in a clear and concise way and helping us under, wrap our heads around kind of what the various paths that we have are. So thank you. It was really good to hear that most businesses in town are already mostly compliant. I definitely agree that whatever we do here, I think supporting local businesses has got to be kind of our North Star. I think absolutely, you know, a very generous grace period to help folks make whatever changes they need. I, you know, I think probably some sort of financial support would be, uh, likely be appropriate as well. Looks like Rebecca may already have an inventory of, of food vendors in town. So I think that's a fantastic place to start, right? Um, we, you know, we need to get a sense of who all of the food vendors that are affected by this are and kind of where they're at. So that we can help work on them, you know, work with them one-on-one, um, you know, hold hands wherever we can be helpful. The nice thing, and this kind of speaks to Peter Chase's comments, the county is providing a lot of pretty good support from local business, for local businesses on this. And, and we're hearing that especially from local businesses and cities that have already adopted. My question is, to what extent can we tap into that if we go our own way on the ordinance? And I think that would be something that we should look at, even if like, you know, so the county, for example, I know is making some of the representatives available to go visit local businesses for free and kind of work with the, uh, you know, managers or owners and do sort of like a walkthrough of like, hey, what's the, what's the state of play here? What are improvements that we can make? I think even if the county wants us to chip in a little money, if we could get our businesses access to that kind of support that's already being provided, I think that would be really helpful. Um, so yeah, I think, uh, you know, I think high level, absolutely supporting businesses, uh, in adapting wherever we go, I think is, is the top priority. Um, I'm glad we kind of had the, the BPI discussion. Thank you guys for teeing that up. I think that's like the really frustrating, uh, you know, kind of logjam that we're at here. And I think Damon, you hit it on the head when you said, there, you know, there's the, the federal issue right of that regulation. But then there's also the, the county level issue of WM Earth Care wants to sell their compost certified organic because you make more. And it's like really frustrating that the county hasn't kindly declined to take that on and instead pass this on to us. So unfortunately, right, that's not something that we can do anything about right now. But I do think that we should absolutely, in our personal capacities, make a point of applying pressure to the county because I think that is a real issue and it's going to remain a real issue until the Board of Supervisors sees fit to do something about it. But that, that doesn't give us a path out here. Um, so, but I just wanted to hit on that. So I think evaluating all of this together, I really agree with, you know, both Pat and Rosa made kind of the, the same point that like waste reduction, right? It's, it's reduce, reuse, recycle. The first one is reduce. I agree with you guys. I think dining in, I think it's got to be reusable. There's just no excuse to be generating that waste. But I think when it comes to takeout, I do want to see something, uh, that is a little bit more kind of realistic than what the county's put forward. I think, for example, like businesses like Amy's that have found BPI certified products where we know it's compostable. You know, I think, I think probably a good idea, even if we're a little bit of ahead, ahead of our time to, to work that in right now. You know, I think, I think that's kind of where I'm at on this. Agree with Pat on, uh, trying to move enforcement to the county if we can. I know it's not, I, I know it's not a guarantee, but that would certainly make the most spent sense, especially since they're already the ones doing the environmental and health services inspections, right? Having less duplication of services is always a good thing. So I think all of this together kind of to me suggests probably option three, uh, the best way to go. Obviously, there's details that need to be ironed out, um, but that's kind of my sense about like direction here. Thank you.
I have just one more. So the, the one thing I, Eli just gave me an idea. Some of our restaurants are really progressive in these areas. And I think that those restaurants should be listened to. But I hate to see overall delays. So possibly an idea would be to go ahead and set your November first date. And then if restaurants have a concern, one on the exception, need financial help, have any issues at all, they should contact us and they should, they should contact the town. Because I think what's happening is I can think of three or four restaurants, not the ones we've been talking about, that are going to keep doing exactly what they're doing with their big plastic containers and no regard for this because they're not paying attention. So, and I, and I think we'll continue to see the people who are, the restaurants who are not complying are not the ones who've already been working on it for, for years. So I think we should maybe do things by exception. You know, it's, the, the, the rule is this, but if, if you are working in this area and we want to work with you, we will talk to you. I don't know, I'm being vague and I, I don't know exactly how to do it. But I just don't like the idea of giving overall long time periods because that just means nobody's going to do anything until, until we tell them they have to do it, especially the ones who aren't apt to comply anyway.
I just want to throw in that, you know, that I support at the very least without a great deal of delay that, you know, restaurateurs know the state law at least, that at least they are, they are aware of it. I don't know how we were going to enforce it, but I think that that's kind of baseline responsibility.
Well, I don't want to produce microplastics in the ocean. So if BPI organics is the way to do that, then I think that that minimum would be something, you know, those type of systems that really become organic is, you know, taking an environmentalist standpoint, right? I think we can get their best through option three. The reason is because we are exceptional. This town is exceptional. We've set up systems that allow us to really get behind what we truly believe in. We have our own enforcement, we have our own committees, we have our own, uh, sustainable, you know, staff that can review and respond to all of this to meet the mark at, at our heartfelt level, the way that we can really change the planet. And I think unfortunately, I don't trust that all organizations have that capability. And that's really what it comes down to is I don't trust what I saw come out of other organizations that are too busy to look at the details to get it clean and perfect. And I think I trust in staff that we can do that. I trust in this council and I trust in our businesses and, and residents to help us do that, do the right thing. Because we as a group in the state, you know, county and everywhere want to do this. But it's, we want to do it better, right? We want to do this exceptionally. It's not that we want to refute anything else. We just, I really, you know, want to go to the next level. And so the only way we're going to be able to do that currently is option three. I think that I would like to explore state reimbursement. Because ultimately we are the enforcement agent under option three. So the burden wouldn't always totally fall on the town. And we could help maybe finance our enforcement of it. So it's not just a, a give, it's a take. The other portion of that is that there's an educational component we could own about what our ordinance is. So Mike and others would work with that, but maybe they're not the group that ultimately would create that educational component. And so part of that is, is the education of staff before it goes out to the public, right? So those are my statements on that. So with that, are you looking for direction? I, I'm hearing option three. Do we need to vote on that or anything? I mean, is, are we all, like, we have a quorum on option three? Okay, yes. Yes, alright, and I, we have some more.
Thanks, Charles. Your excellent comments just reminded me of something that I wanted to, um, mention that I forgot to. Looking at the actual red line ordinance here, which by the way, super helpful as a starting point. Thank you for that. The definition for compliant, non-reusable foodware, basically that what's kind of set out is it's either BPI certified, which I think is, you know, I think we know what the criteria there are, so that's very clear. Or it has other third-party product certification recognized by our community development director. I was just thinking that maybe we should, uh, kind of clarify some criteria there for that possible other third-party certification because there's a lot of sort of greenwashing, i.e. BS certifications out there that don't really mean much at all and may actually, you know, may not be what they seem on their surface. And, uh, you know, I'd rather kind of specify like, hey, you know, let's be looking for criteria specifically that like, aren't going to leave behind microplastics, um, you know, that type of stuff. Yep. So, okay, thank you.
Want to say anything else? Okay, alright.
Just while they're discussing, that being said, there are several variables within option three that if you feel like you are at a point where you wanted to provide direction to staff regarding any of those variables you would like to see included, excluded, edited, et cetera, and
Couldn't we bring up those, uh, back on the slide? That would be helpful.
Yeah, and I think just for reference, there are page, also page three of the staff report. What, the one I think is council member Beckman just mentioned that this modified option three three would allow the modified, um, well, would allow change the definition of non-reusable, compliant, non-reusable foodware to include BPI certified and other, the third-party compostable, certified compostable products. So that's, that's really the, the first main one, which I think I've heard, at least tonight, all are in agreement on, but just confirming that. Yeah, the, the next one is removing the twenty five cent. Yes, additional charge. I think many of the council members commented on that. Am I set a, all in agreement there? We have sort of the, uh, next one would be essentially requiring that any agreements with the town, with food vendors or any contracts that those food vendors, such as the ones that we're talking about, um, with, whether it's at events, uh, food trucks are out, are operating on town facilities, uh, would be required to comply. And so that, I, I think we're acknowledging actually in this staff report that we need to put some more meat on that, more definition there. But essentially the intent would be that if we are, um, one of the ideas I think we actually floated was like, if somebody is, has a special event permit that we are actually approving and therefore that comes with a right of conditions, we could write into the special event permit that if you are, um, serving food at those events, you must comply with the basically ordinance. So is any, I'll talk about that one in particular. And this, I spoke to the organizations as well.
Yeah, just quick, does that mean anybody who has, would be using the community center? In other words, like I want to do a wedding, whatever, with that apply to that also.
If it was, so I think this is what gets down in the nitty gritty of the definitions. But I think if it was a catered event by entity, um, yes.
Okay.
That would be the, um, if it's using the kitchen in the community center, no, it's not something like that. I mean, sorry, if it's yes, if it's just using the facilities and, which is foodware there, that's no. But if it's catered from an outside company coming in and providing that food, then yes.
Okay, you may have to tweak the, I think there's agreements, if I want to go use it, if I want to rent the community center, I think there's a agreement between myself and the town through Park and Rec, you probably have to tweak that agreement also, depending on which way this goes.
Okay, organizations. Yeah, there's more, there's more work to do on, so there's certainly on that aspect.
Yeah, I'm getting ahead of it, but yeah.
That's helpful.
We should talk about it.
Can I just clarify something? So, so were you saying that if, say, a catered, there was a catered event by a, a, like you said, a wedding, they would have to comply with, the caterer would have to comply with that. But then if someone was using the kitchen like the Lions Club, they wouldn't?
So we, I mean, again, this is sort of draft form. But if there's a regular sort of meeting that, those typically aren't special event sort of permitted activities, um, there's weekly meetings, there's other, um, types of organizations that use facilities just to meet. Like, you know, again, such as preliminary, the thinking would be that those know that would not be subject to the actual specificity of the ordinance, but it certainly can.
So
Can I speak to that a little bit? Just my understanding of it? So really, we're talking about an ordinance that is food vendors. Like, I think that's an actual legal definition of someone who sells food for a living, a business entity, right? These are not business entities that sell food. However, if they're using town facilities, you could maybe make it mandatory that within those town facilities, anyone that uses the kitchen has to do a certain standard amount of compliance, right? The issue is, is you cannot actually ask those, those organizations or individuals to do it. Or else you're talking about, we go back to the people renting the parks and being, doing picnics. And like, you know, how, like the level of enforcement or just kind of wherewithal to do that is next to nil. It won't, even if you say you want to do that, you can't, we won't be able to do it. So it's like, that's what I'm understanding is really a discussion at that like gray zone, right?
Correct. Two, I'm sorry, just two other quick comments. One is, um, just remember that the Lions do have an agreement with the town to use that facility. Right, just keep that in mind. And the other thing is, again, it's, it's a total balancing act. But if we require caterers or anybody, caterers, I'll just say, in general, using the community center to follow this ordinance, is there any potential financial effect? In other words, is anybody else in the county doing that or are we the only one? And again, I don't know if you know that or not. It's just food for thought, by the way.
Yes, and I would just, you know, this is sort of a narrower or, or the county ordinance goes much further and actually applies to more towns, i- i- it applies to much more than just what we're talking about here with the quarter, with the option three draft ordinance. And so, uh, this is definitely would apply to less a lesser number of organizations or, or, you know, events than what the county's model ordinance would require. Again, there's still, we have to, there are definitions. So I think one of the key things, you, you do have to define this to make it clear and enforceable and be able to actually know what we're actually talking about here and ultimately enforcing and, and asking, coming back to you with for adoption. The county health and safety code does use, use a definition of food facility and that is something that the county model ordinance has included. There are exceptions to that definition and it gets into very specific, you know, things like a, a food facility is not a church, private club or other nonprofit association that gives or sells food to its members and guests, not to the general public at an event that occurs not more than three days in any ninety day period. I mean, I don't know, you know, but there are, we can create, I think one of the advantages, if we're going with our own ordinance is we can create. The language around what we actually intend to. Um, and how we intend to enforce and actually make the requirements apply. Um, throughout town. And so it's going to take some work and I think we have to be careful about how we do it um, and give all the. Considerations that you're mentioning here, but I think the intent and maybe that would be good to clarify, the intent would be. That if you are. Um, a, a. You know, food vendor that is a. Private. Privately, you know, providing coming in here, basically a business that serves food. Um, and you are serving um, uh. Caterer, it could be a food truck, it could be somebody, you know, uh, at a, one of our town events. Um, that would be subject to the. Option three draft ordinance. If you are again, just serving maybe your own organization. If you are not providing food to the general public. Um, and um. That's a little bit different of a scenario. You're actually have a, you know, an organization only, members only. Uh, thing in the community center. That's a little bit different. Um, we know obviously that those organizations that we have. Usual foodware, we have plates, you know, that's obviously what, how it's done, but.
This is, so my only other question to you is, is we brought up the, the, the farmer's market. Yeah, Safeway isn't like, maybe some of their spaces in are, but, but ultimately the food in of itself, the packaging is the packaging, right? And the issue with the farmer's market is they're farmers, they're not even vendors, they're farmers, and I would be very wary. About basically approaching them with these kind of mandates, just because of the nature of their small business and what they're providing. And the way that they package it, because the definition between, you know, prepared and not, or whatever is really not. Clear enough that I wouldn't really want to broach that, but it, do they in the model ordinance for.
They are considered of health, under health and safety code, they are considered a food facility. Um. Talk about farm stands, certified farmers markets, certified farmers markets. Um, so I, I was gonna ask.
Oh, go ahead. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Just one thing you should understand is, is, is the definition of food facility in the food retail code is really, really broad. But not all regulations in the food code apply to every type of food vendor. There are more limited requirements for nonprofits who are serving food. There are more limited requirements for farmers markets and the, the requirements are really geared toward protecting. You know, food safety, but you know, and so, so. I, I think the county maybe could have been clearer in the drafting of their ordinance because. There are people who stores that sell food, but they don't serve food. And so this doesn't apply. So, and I think, I think, you know, Nevada, what Nevada, it is said. Basically, food vendors who sell food on city property or at city sponsored events, and that's sort of how they defined it. Um, so you know, a, a nonprofit that might be. It just serving food because they've rented the community center. Wouldn't necessarily be bound, but that's really a policy call for council.
And, and I would say about the farmer's market, I, the original draft, that was one of the things that I called out as well was. If we got this far in the conversation, it would be helpful. That's obviously something that we have in town every week. Um, and that's purely something we could define whether that applies to. Farmer, you know, farmers markets or not, and I, I, I think there's valid. Concerns there. I, that's sort of something I flagged as well when I was going through the county's ordinance. It's like. Yeah, um, you know, so again.
Well, I mean, I, I can give you a general attitude about farmers markets is in the middle of COVID. When everything else was mandated to be shut down, they allowed farmers market. So that's the importance and the level of support. That I've seen the county and other health organizations value. Farmers production and the ability to bring it into town. And that's why I would defend their right and not be overly punitive through ordinance. On their ability to sell food to the populace, right? That's really my take on it, but. You know, I'd like to hear the other counsel as well.
I don't think you can have a dishwasher at a farmer's market.
But they're also.
That's also the BPI versus like recycle, like think strawberries, right? Like think. Think all the things that are sold, not right, like. Well, I mean, it, it's so it's just, you know, I think it, I, I don't really want to go and. It like to me, I don't, at this time, I think it's once again, making it over, reaching an over complicated. When people just want to go buy some cherries, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've definitely seen plenty of uh, like cherries or, or, you know, produce like come in like paper fiber little boxes.
That's fine, but yeah, I mean, that, that like, uh. Profit margins are very small on farmers, right? Um, so I guess I, you know, like, it, it, that's, you can say. You can say environmentally, we're going to say walk the walk, but these people are coming from the Central Valley. They're on a totally different pay scale. And if, if basically the recyclable plastic containers that they choose to use, which still can be recycled. Right? Uh, they don't want to pay for the paper. What? You don't think that, uh?
I, I have a stack of berry of plastic berries.
Those.
Baskets in because nobody.
But that's like milk jugs. Milk jugs are, 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 are plastic that is recyclable and it goes into the blue container. It doesn't go into the green container. It goes into the blue container and it comes down to back about reduction of overall waste, but you buy the strawberries. So.
I, I, I think what it sounds like, Adam, it sounds like what we're telling you is that when you do the definition, you kind of have to figure out how to craft it. Because it sounds like the two, one thing that came up was nonprofits and the other one coming up is farmer's market. And I'm sure I can trust staff and working with Amy to craft the definition of what it applies to.
One, one thing I'd like to add here is, um, somebody brought up about the county offering up resources for. How to trade these things out without increasing your cost. And if anything. There were a couple of businesses in San Antonio that said this was a cost savings. Effort for them. So I think we need to keep it positive. It's not like we're trying to help people get out of it. We should be trying to help people get into it. You know, we're going to offer the assistance to even to e- even the farmer's market. I mean, I don't know that I would make that part of it right off the bat. Maybe that's phase two as we move forward, but. The town organizations, the civic organizations in this town, they're leaders. We've got to, we, I think our town, the people who run our civic organizations. Need to show people like picking a pickle that we're not thinking that we're, we get to get away with something that, that he doesn't. I think the town really needs to walk the walk on this one. I don't want to see Lions Club. I mean, they don't already. There are, I think the consciousness. The environmental consciousness is already there in these civic organizations. So to give them a pass doesn't make any sense at all to me. They should be on board.
Yeah, I would definitely support making sure that whatever. Uh, assistance or support we offer to local businesses, that we are treating each farmer's market individual vendor as a local business. Since they're coming and doing business in our town for at least one day a week.
I just wanted to. I don't know if it's a distinction that, you know, is important here, but. There's a difference between people who are selling produce at a farmer's market and people who are selling a, you know. A cooked item. So, um. You know, because I don't think this, this law doesn't apply to Safeway, right?
As, but really to like their.
Their deli.
Deli counter and they have a like sushi. Area and whatnot, so it would apply to that area of the store, but not to prepackaged. Sort of items.
Right. So, so it doesn't apply to what? The grapes at, at Safeway, the plastic therein, it doesn't apply.
That's my understanding. The county's doesn't, but.
There's actually um, legislation being discussed at the state level right now to address grocery store. Uh, plastic packaging, um, but the county's ordinance and ours would not.
Right. So I would say that at this time, you know, if you're selling strawberries at the farmer's market. It's a, it's not a conversation. If you're selling, um, you know, a slice of pizza or. I don't know, um, a burrito or something, then you know, that's different. Um, because that's more like, that's actual takeout.
Yeah, I'm in alignment with what you said.
Yep.
Okay.
We're together, guys.
You guys caught that? Okay.
Okay, so is that everything that you needed or is there even more? If we have. Time permitting, eight thirty, we're going to get through this.
Yeah, I know, we should, we should. Yeah, we'll work on enforcement. We heard com- good comments around enforcement. So I think that's good and make good word.
As you continue to move down option three, you'll still be able to take any public feedback as, as you craft the ordinance more and work with local components. So the conversation's not done yet.
Yeah, no, so a- and just thanks, thank you to the council for all your helpful feedback and comments on this. This is good.
All right. Well, thank you. So item six B, I'm going to recuse myself as I own property within five hundred feet of the consideration. So I will now remove myself and pass cattle over to. Vice Mayor Eli Beckman.
Have a nice break.
Okay, then we get to the fun stuff.
All right. So this is going to be item six D on tonight's agenda, uh, which relates to allowing Mitchell Engineering to withdraw their bid. For the San Clemente Pump Station Outfall Rehabilitation Project and awarding the contract to the next lowest responsible bidder. Uh, who's J and B Construction in an amount of two point eight million dollars and I'll turn it over to staff.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Beckman and uh, members of the council. So, uh. On May sixteenth, we brought this item for um, approval to advertise for bids. Um, we did get um, four bids. And there, I do want to make a one correction to the staff report and then just kind of a clarification. Um. So we had our base bid plus we also had an additive bid item that gives us the option to take it or not. Um, the basis of award was regardless of whether we take. The additive, it was the combination of the two. Um, and so the initial apparent low bidder was. Uh, Mitchell Engineering, they then realized that they dropped a zero. And so instead of a thousand dollars each for sixty five of these. Um. Uh, internal um, ceiling elements for pipe, um, it should have been ten thousand, so six hundred fifty thousand dollars each. Um, so they requested to relieve their bid. And um, that leaves us with GMB um. Instruction, who is slightly higher, but. Definitely less than the other third and fourth um, responsive bidders. So. Um, one thing I did want to correct, um, the staff report did say the. Engineers estimate for the project was two point five two, but that was for the combination of the. Um, base bid plus the additive. And so at this time, we are not, um, based on the prices for the added, we are not recommending. Um, proceeding with that. Also, you know, we have lots of um, other priorities in town and. You know, given bit bids did come slightly over um, estimate, we. You know, we don't think it's prudent at this time. Um, we can always revisit that in the future. And otherwise, um, this is a very uh, important. Storm drain pump station. It's, it's one of our larger storm drain pump stations that. Um, serves much of the watershed, um, both east and west of the freeway. And it doesn't have the um, retention basins that many of our other. Um, facilities in town have, so it is heavily reliant on the pumps and the large pumps, which. Um, have experienced issues over the years and we've had to Band-Aid them. We did have to do a emergency repair on it. Um, some point in the last eighteen months, so we want to move this forward to. Hopefully get this up and running. It's not going to happen through this winter. We're going to have to monitor and, and keep an eye on it, but. They get it up and running by the following winter. And um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
Great. Thank you, RJ. Any questions from council members?
Just a clarification, the additive thing that you've decided not to do because it was too high. What exactly was that? And, and why do we not need it?
Yeah, so um. So these are, so it's a reinforced concrete pipe. Um, as opposed to. Various forms of plastic pipes which have kind of rubber gasket. So. The rubber gasket has kind of a tighter water, water tight seal. Often those pipes can handle pressure. This is a pressure system. Um, the reinforced concrete pipe is, it's like a concrete on concrete, so it's not as. Um, tightly sealed. So we have had, I believe, two small sinkholes. Um, over the last ten or so years in the Paradise Drive area. Um, on one hand, the word single sometimes sounds scary. We think of some of the more. You know, catastrophic versions of that. These weren't so much. I mean, they definitely were a. You know, drop everything for twenty four hours and fix them, but. They cost the town probably. Twenty, twenty five thousand dollars each time. Um, so is it possible we get another single? Sure, but. Is it worth spending three hundred plus thousand dollars or figure their exact? Yeah, three hundred twenty five thousand dollars. That's a lot of sinkhole repairs that we could complete, right? So a- again, I, I don't expect it to be a catastrophic event. Um, it's, it's really just.
And it doesn't, does it extend the life of this pump moving forward to do the?
Yeah, it would just really address, um. Not, so this project is really the pump station more so, and then separately that infrastructure is the pipe that connects all the way to San Clemente Creek. Over by the fire station. Um, so like I said, it wouldn't preclude us from doing in the future, you know, if we saw a, you know. Drastic increase in sinkholes, but at this time, based on the past history of two over last ten years. You know, we'd have to have a lot of those events to get our money back.
You're the one who has to fix the sinkholes, so we'll, I guess we should count. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just wondering if the um, area of the previous sinkholes, were there anywhere near property or?
Um, the, so the one that I was present for um, in the last few years was kind of right in the middle of the intersection. And often what happens is you're doing work or, and someone sees this small hole. And starts probing it. And then you start to realize that there's a void. So then we open it up and we realize that, oh, there's actually a. Five cubic yard or. Seven cubic yard hole here that we need fill in. Um, and so we excavated it, we. Bring in controlled density fill, which is kind of a light. Um, it's, it's like a. Very low strength concrete off and just pump it in, kind of seal it up, and then we put the road back together. Um. So. And I'm sorry if I didn't catch.
I was just wondering if it was in the vicinity of a home.
Yeah, no, not, no, um, it was not. Yeah.
And then to monitor that, do you have cameras? Do you have, how do you kind of? Keep an eye on? Possible sinkholes.
You know, we're, we're constantly out on the roads, working, um. Usually it's going to show up in some thin on the surface, right? Um. So it's, it's could be all of a sudden, we see the, the structural part of the road giving in. Okay, but now it's giving in rapidly. Okay, well, something's going on because. You know. A week ago was fine and what's going on? So i- i- it's just. Being actively looking on your streets and knowing what's going on. Um, we could um, totally. Bring in a video camera in a couple of years and, and do another review, but we've already done that and it did show that they're actually. Pretty tight.
Okay.
So. But yeah, that's, that's absolutely something we could do with time because it is an area of settlement.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Question, sir.
Yeah, just one, um. I know that, I'm sorry, let me back up. We're using measure F money, right? Two different fiscal years. Do you, I don't know if you know, maybe more of a Doria question. Do you know for those, because we've been funding a number of projects over fiscal years using measure F money? Do you know total revenue for each of those fiscal years and how much we've committed in projects and how much proximity we, we have left over?
I'm happy to speak to, I mean, obviously this fiscal year, we, we budgeted for the one, this was in this fiscal year's budget, so um, that's the one point two million. Twenty three, twenty four, I think, um.
what do we say at the end of this year, Daria? Maybe you can talk about it. We we have about um, not including, obviously, the reserve is two point five million, but above beyond the reserve.
We're not counting the reserve.
No, of course, of course. Yeah. But I wanna, I'll I'll hand it over to you, but I, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, at the end of um, the year that just ended, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the books aren't closed yet, but we anticipate we'll have about eight point five million dollars. That includes the reserve of two point five million dollars. Then for the current year that just began twenty uh, three, twenty-four, we're anticipating receiving four point three million dollars in um, Corder Madera sales tax revenue. That's from the latest figures from HDL, our sales tax consultants. And we have nine million dollars of expenditures in the adopted budget, which includes the the one point two million dollars for this project. Um, so that will leave about three point eight million dollars at the end of this fiscal year, um, which includes the reserve. Um, the following year, next year, twenty-four, twenty-five, our consultants have estimated will receive four point four million dollars in revenue. Um, so that will, um, deducting the reserve will leave a five point seven million dollars, which will be available um, in that fund and the Measure F, the the Corder Madera Sales Tax Fund. Um, and that would be for capital projects or fire mitigation or, you know, senior programs. Um, so um, in addition to the Court of Madera Sales Tax Fund, there's also other sources of revenues much smaller that can be used for capital projects. There's grants. There's um, the the TAM Transportation Authority of Marin money. Um, there's um, state gasoline tax, um, you know, and other smaller, but um, smaller amounts of money.
I guess the question is, I'm sorry, I scribbling down numbers. It sounds like for twenty-four, twenty-five, we have four, five point seven million we can use. But it sounds like one point two million is being taken for this, or I'm rounding, I'm rounding up. It's like two point one three seven is being taken for this project, right? Plus, we also are funding another one point five million in Caltrans. Correct? For that fiscal year?
That's fit this fiscal year. No, so we don't have the, you you're talking about the over crossing project?
Yeah.
No, that's that twenty-four, twenty-five, there's.
No, that's, no, that's in twenty-three, twenty-four, the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, the one point two million dollars um, that was mentioned for this this project and um, the Tamil Pious Overcrossing Project, that's all in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, the current year.
But there's another one point two million.
I think there's.
So the balance would be, yeah, two point one three seven, so it'd be that five point seven, two point one three seven would be the remaining.
Yes.
Right, about three million, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, about, yeah, about three point six million.
Yeah, so um, and just to, I think, to get up, to discuss some of the specific projects that we think still are um, we plan to commit. Um, you know, we can talk about cost of one for complete streets for five plus years, at least as long as I've been here. And um, so that's still one we want to fund and and build next summer. Um, the other one, it's um, luckily grant mode, like ninety percent grant funded. It's um, the central and regional pathways. So even though it's a one point five million dollar project, our portion is only a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, so those are big projects that still can move forward. And then beyond that, um, there's still leftover to, you know, we want to start the sewer and storm drain infrastructure in Madera Gardens, but the storm drain piece is is relatively small, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that project wouldn't be held up. And then there's also all sorts of other things that we could fold in, whether it's, you know, the Ecopath Connector, whether it's the Heart Street Connector, whether it's, you know, more stuff on the park side. So I mean, we we have some flexibility. Um, but the big ticket projects are accounted for.
I think big picture, obviously, yeah, I mean, we've have thought about the sort of expenditures that are gonna be needed um, from the Sales Tax Fund in twenty-four, twenty-five. This is um, uh, certainly a need and does not impact or preclude us from still funding some of these other projects that have been on the radar and sort of anticipated with our planning processes through uh, this year and the last year.
I guess without looking at the numbers, which I I have an easier time looking at them. Um, it sounds like for twenty-four, twenty-five, there's about three point six million remaining in Measure F money, right? But it sounds like you're gonna, again, just high level, you're still gonna have a number of projects that you're gonna fund for Measure F. And then we still have to fund other program like for senior youth vegetation management and all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely, yeah. And and just to clarify, I think it's actually the five point seven minus.
The one point two.
No, two point, sorry, two point one.
Two point one.
Right, so but that includes, right, so then we're down to three point six for the other projects.
Correct. You see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, no, no, I I do. And I I think it's it's absolutely, it's good to sort of consider and think about future budgeting and planning when we're talking about outlays and starting a project over multiple years. So I appreciate the concern and question.
And that was also part of the consideration of why we didn't do the additive bit item, right?
The engineer's estimate of two point five two million, was that with the additive bit item or without?
It was. So it's actually, um, so i- it is about twenty-two percent higher than the engineer's engineer's estimate. And so we considered this, we we looked at potentially rebidding it. Um, but if you look at the four bidders and you take out Mitchell Engineering, um, I I don't know that we're, you know, statistically, I don't I don't think we're gonna get a better result.
Okay, that was what I was gonna ask is just kind of your gut check. So, okay, thank you. Any other questions from council members? Okay, sounds good. So we're gonna open this up to public comment. Would any members of the public here tonight like to speak? And seeing none, do we have any hands up on Zoom or emails?
Yeah, one attendee, no hands up and no emailed public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. And we'll bring you back to council for discussion and a possible motion.
I can make the motion, I can make motion, a couple comments. I want to thank RJ for the staff report. Um, plus, when we have questions, you make common sense out of this stuff. I'm not an engineer or architect or anything, but you just make it more simple, more easier for under to to understand. I will suggest going forward from a staff standpoint. If we're using Measure F funds, I'd like to see in the staff report a breakdown of what the the revenue is gonna be and what projects we're taking out. But so we have an understanding of how much money we have left in that fund. I just don't want to get to the point where we're bumping up, maybe bumping up against reserves, even I know they're there for a purpose, or we don't have sufficient money for vegetation management, other needs that the town may have. Again, it's all beneficial to the town. It's just, I think we need to have an understanding of that, those funding mechanisms. And with that, I'm very glad to make the motion to um, approve the, I gotta scroll down. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but approve the bid, uh, now, two million eight thirty-four.
I'll second.
Thank you. And any other comments? All right, we're set.
Council member Casissa?
Yes.
Council member Avasio?
Yes.
Council member Thomas?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Lee recused himself and the motion carries. Thank you.
Somebody needs to go get Charles. You need to go.
You're allowed to listen. You're just not allowed to like react or influence in a way that the council can see or hear.
Right.
Yeah.
For comment.
You are, you are allowed to listen.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's good to know.
So you can like stream the meeting if you want.
Yeah, it does pop into Zoom.
But I need to take a lesson in efficiency.
All the water right onto your.
All right. Good. I like water final. Um, so we close six B?
Yeah.
All right, council reports, town manager report, Adam Wolf. Thank you. Um, one just note on an upcoming event on August first, I think it is, we have the National Night Out by held by CMPA at Menke Park. So that's always a good opportunity for our community to interact with our um, uh, police officers and and department there. And I I I know it's been a success in the past, so we're hoping to restart that. It's been a while since we've had that one. Um, and I think just a note on the um, it actually came up in the last item, the Tamil Pious Bridge uh, Overcrossing Project. Just some uh, news to report that the Caltrans did actually certify their mitigated neck deck. Uh, and um, selected the alternative for B as part of that environmental document. And things are trending in the right direction um, in terms of funding, but we're still working on that to a certain extent. But I hope to have, uh, you know, more news on that um, in the next month or so. Um, and just wanted to inform the council that we're we're still on it and we're still working uh, towards that really um, great improvement. Okay. Town Council reports.
Yeah. I just want to say it was a great Fourth of July in the town of Corder Madera. It was a great parade. The park was wonderful. I talked to so many of the artists who have been coming for many years and they love it and the community loves them and there's so much wonderful stuff there. And Julie Kritzberger from the Chamber is still sitting here tonight um, because she's so dedicated to our town. And I saw her on the Fourth of July and she looked like she worked really, really hard. And I know it's a huge job for one person. She takes on the management of this on her own. And I just want to thank you. And I want you to come to us, to the council, to the staff. If you have needs for more volunteers, helpers, whatever, because uh, you are a superwoman, girl. I cannot believe you, all that you did on that day and all you do every Fourth of July. So mostly thank you, but let us know if you need something.
That's quite my, I just attended the Twin Cities Disaster Preparities Committee last Monday.
I attended Central uh, Marin Sanitation Agency Board Meetings on June twenty-second and July eleventh. And then Adam and I were in a meeting this morning with Senator McGuire regarding the overpass, and we just appreciate his continued support on that project. Yeah, we also, uh, many of the council attended the MCMC meeting in Sausalito where uh, you know, there was some really good Q and A with um, uh, with uh, Jared Huffman. Yeah, sorry.
What's his name?
I haven't had dinner, so.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so it was, it was really informative about what's happening in Washington as far as uh, budget hearings in particular. Um, and potential impacts as we move forward in a split Congress, so um, and that's, it's been a light summer, so um, with that, I guess I can close council reports and open up the discussion of draft agenda for upcoming town council meeting. No comment? All right, so with that adjournment. All right. I'd now like to bring to order the sanitary district number two uh, meeting, a subsidiary district of the town of Corder Madera. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at eight fifty-five PM.
Okay, um, board member Casissa?
Here.
Board member Avasio?
Here.
Board member Thomas?
Here.
Vice President Beckman?
Here.
President Lee?
Here. Uh, we've already done the uh, salute to the flag. Um, so we'll open it up for uh, public comment. Uh, this is uh, the time for the public to address any um, concern not currently on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing none and and.
We do not have any hands raised or emailed public comment.
All right, so we'll close public comments and move to presentation. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Um, the purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together, which are routine or have been discussed previously, do not require further discussion. They'll be approved by a single motion. Any member of the district board, staff or public may request to remove an item. Anybody on the board? Anybody in staff? Anyone in the public? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
We approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Um, board member Casissa?
Yes.
Board member Avasio?
Yes.
Board member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President Beckman?
Yes.
Presently.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All right, number five, the public hearing, five A, review and possible adoption of resolution numbers for twenty twenty-three, approving the sanitary district number two operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. This is a two-meeting item and that was already introduced on June twentieth, so this would be the second. All right. All right.
Relighted to have Daria.
Thank you. Okay, cute. Um, at the uh, June twentieth sanitary uh, district meeting, the Public Works Director presented the proposed sanitary district budget for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And since the board did not direct staff to make any changes, the budget in the packet is the same as what was presented at the last meeting. Um, just a a high level review, um, revenue is expected to increase by approximately a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars as compared to the previous year. And that's the result of property taxes increasing by about four point seven percent. Um, the sewer district user charges have not increased since um, the twenty, two thousand nine, two thousand ten fiscal year. And a rate study is currently being conducted. Um, and staff will present this, the findings of that study to the board at a future meeting. And in addition to that rate study, staff will look into other options for for financing future capital projects such as issuing debt. Um, and those will also be presented at a future meeting to the board. Um, operating expenses, not including um, grants um, and loan pro uh, uh, projects offered by the district will increase by about uh, six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, thirteen point six percent. And that's largely the result of um, payment to the town for town staff performing um, sanitary district work. Um, and that will account for about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of the increase, since there'll be increased work um, done on um, behalf of the sanitary district. Um, maintenance for equipment will account for about thirty-seven thousand dollars for of the increase. And maintenance for pump stations and sewer mains will um, account for about seventy-five thousand dollars of the increase. And utilities will in it account for about fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and then there'll, there's depreciation expense that will increase by about three hundred thousand dollars. And some of the the increases will be offset by decreases in supplies and legal expenditures. Um, and grant and loan pro uh, projects offered by the district will decrease by about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so overall, all of the operating expenses, including the grants, depreciation and debt service payments that are made to CMSA, um, the the increase will be about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, and then in addition to the operating expenses, the budget includes um, five million, nine hundred and one thousand dollars in capital projects, which are um, listed in the attachment three of the of the staff report. So overall, the district's net position as as of um, the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year will be about thirty-seven million. But more than thirty-four million of that will be invested in capital assets. Um, the emergency reserve will be about two point five million dollars, leaving only about four hundred and four thousand as as the unrestricted portion. Um, the revenue will um, be like, it will be sufficient to pay for the operating expenses, but capital and project, capital projects will need to be financed. You know, either by um, debt or um, an an increase in sewer district user fees in the future.
I can make one clarification. Um, the reduction of the five hundred K or so for the grant programs, it's really a result of one of our larger sewer rehab projects um, that we've pushed a year. So we were intending to do a big sewer rehab project in Madera Gardens. Um, due to various other um, competing interests, we're pushing that a year. It's still gonna happen. Um, but that reduces the amount of residences that would otherwise tap into those funds. So there will be some, um, although limited along the project that we have ongoing. It's on Meadows Suite in Tamil Pious up to um, Chapman, but not to the scale that we would if we took tackled, you know, all or half of Madera Gardens as part of one big sewer rehab. So we're not, in a sense, we're not reducing the um, grant to each individual person. We just happen to have uh, projected less people that could tap into it.
Okay, is it, all right, so then I'll bring it to the dice. Does anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay, so uh, I opened up to public comment. Is there any public comment on the budget? Seeing none, is there any online?
We do not have any public comment for this item.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back. Is there any deliberation or can I get a motion?
I'll move that we approve it, but I want to first welcome back Daria. I'm glad to hear that you're feeling better. But yes, I'll move that we approve the budget. I know we looked at it all last time and. I totally trust our staff on this, so.
I'll second it.
Board member Casissa, board member Avasio?
Yes.
Board member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President Beckman?
Yes.
President Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, you know, it's a true test of leadership when your staff can actually succeed even in your absence. It means you've really set up a network and and really stewarded an amazing group and so kudos to that as well.
But Adam was really nervous without you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No matter.
All right. So that closes the public hearings. We have no business items. Is there any district manager reports?
Just a quick one, because I know we've been talking about the timing of the rate study and then it's ST two master plan. I just want to give you an update on schedule. It has been a little more complicated and we're gonna have some, some tough things to discuss in the coming months. But we're kind of targeting hopefully September and where we're kind of internally going through multiple iterations. So it's not that we haven't forgot about it, it's still important work, but yeah, there's a lot of layers to it, so. That's it.
Okay. Is there anything a board member reports? Nothing going on with the with the larger sanitary district?
No, I know.
Okay. So discussion of draft agenda for upcoming board meetings, nothing? All right. Adjourned.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you.